Okay, it's seven o'clock. Let's get started. This is the regular city council meeting for the City of Tika K, South Carolina, Monday, April 19th, 2021. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by the moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Say we got a good packed house today. I like to see that. Wish we do this every time.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda and add item 1C, special presentation regarding Special Olympics.
I have a motion by Gus Machina. So I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heather. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's start with item number 1, special presentation, the recognition of our city retirees. Very solemn moment here. We hate to see y'all go. But...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the community. Tonight is a celebratory occasion as we get to celebrate four of our personnel who are moving to the next chapter, moving to retirement. And we are so excited for them. So if you will hold your applause to the end, first up, we have our former face of City Hall, Ms. Diana Vick. Diana worked for the city for right at eight years and did such an amazing job for us as our receptionist, greeting folks as they came into City Hall, and helping them over the phone. And you will absolutely be missed. And it's so good to see you again.
I'm good.
Our next one is Captain Warren Lewis. Where are you? Come on up, Warren. Warren is a member of our fire department for a lot longer than eight years, but actually with the city for eight years. And Warren's done a tremendous job in helping us through the transition as we became a full-time fire department, worked tirelessly first with the Tika K Volunteer Fire Department, and then here lastly with the with the city fire department. And Warren, you've done a tremendous job. I hear from Chief Hasty all the time, what a huge help you were in him coming in. And we wish you nothing but the best, sir. Absolutely.
Twenty-two years with the volunteers.
Twenty-two with the volunteers. It's an amazing, amazing feat. And Warren, we just can't thank you enough. Our next one, Mr. Tom Goble. Come on up, Tom. Tom was our Development Services Director. Tom worked for the city for 15 years, right?
No orange.
Got it on the socks. Tom came and helped us start the our Development Services Department, our building department, right on the heels of Lake Shore Finishing and hitting Build Out. Tom has done a tremendous job in creating that department for us and working tirelessly over these years on the building inspections and plan reviews and things like that. And Tom, I just can't thank you enough for your friendship and for your dedication to the city, most certainly. And last, but certainly not least, Ms. Barbie Staples.
Boy, somebody's excited for her leaving.
Barbie's been with the city for 19 years. She started just shortly after I did and has worked in a number of positions for the city. Most recently is our business license official. Prior to that, I think you helped, well, tried to help keep Grant's head on straight, one of our former city managers. But Barbie has kind of been our Swiss Army knife around City Hall and done a little bit of everything. And I just, Barbie, I can't thank you enough. Appreciate your friendship over the years, the kindness that you've shown my children. You will be missed.
Our retirees, ladies and gentlemen. Let's get together. Go for a picture. Counsel, do you want to come down for the picture? Really, you don't have to leave. I'll give you all time if you want to leave. Can't believe you don't want to stick around for all the fun we're gonna have for the next, I mean, two hours, you think? Maybe two hours.
I gotta eat.
Boys gotta eat. Well, I'm just reading the next one, so that's no big deal. Unless you want to read it. You want to read it?
Oh, you're good at that.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Well, you really know how to clear a room, I tell you. All right, item number 1B, proclamation for Spring Cleanup Week and Earth Day. And I have a proclamation to read. We will test my public school education abilities here. Proclamation recognizing Spring Pickup Week and Earth Day 2021, whereas April 19th through April 23rd is Spring Pick Me Up Week in the City of Tika K. And whereas in celebration of Earth Day, the city recognizes the outstanding collaboration and efforts of Keep America Beautiful, Palmetto Pride, Keep York County Beautiful, City of Tika K staff and volunteers who work to keep Tika K beautiful. And the city will offer reduced cost for curbside pickup of large items when scheduled through the city and encourage all residents to recycle properly, pick up litter in our parks and open spaces, and volunteer to keep Tika K beautiful. Now therefore, I, David L. O'Neil, Mayor of the City of Tika K, do hereby proclaim April 19th through 23rd, 2021, as Spring Pick Me Up Week in this community. And I call upon all citizens to join in the efforts of the city staff to volunteer to support Spring Pick Me Up and celebrate Earth Day on April 22nd dated this 19th day of April. David L. O'Neil, Mayor, City of Tika K.
Great job. You must have practiced that.
Twice. Okay. I'll leave that there. You can pick it up later. Let's go to item number 1C. 1C, special presentation, Special Olympics. Chief.
So it's, I gotta go up. That might have been for Barbie. I don't know. So it's rare that we get to do what I'm getting ready to do. Council often doesn't get recognized. They get to hear all the bad stuff, just like I do sometimes.
No.
But one thing I wanted to say is, this year, we had the Tika K Polar Plunge Special Olympics, and our goal was 25,000. In the past, our highest is 28,000. This year, we were able to raise $45,000.
Wow.
$20,000 over the goal.
Amazing.
But the top team outside of the schools was Tika K Council. So the council raised over $2,200.
Wow.
Councilmember Overman raised almost $900.
Wow, way to go, Heather.
And as a team, you all did amazing. And so it's my honor, this was sent to me from the South Carolina Special Olympics, to present you with a plaque for the 2021. We are the highest of fundraising of the state so far. And also, I have a towel that the Special Olympics wanted to give to you. So congratulations, and thank you all for being part of that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That was fun.
Is that a beach towel?
I think I already got one. I'm pretty sure I did.
Thank you.
She said she loved the cold. There we go.
Heather did. Thank you, Chief. And thanks for everybody's effort in the polar plunge and raising the money for the Special Olympics. Did you say $45,000?
Forty.
$45,000. Absolutely amazing. Appreciate it.
Good.
All right, let's move on to, let's go to public comments. Let me see what we got on the list. Let's start with Liz Duda. Get up here and do the right thing. Is that your... Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Liz Duda, 1081 Palmetto Drive. The first thing I would like to say is, I want to make sure you saw the skateboarders in the parking lot. It shows that there's continued demand by the youth for skating in Tika K. I also want to thank you. I think you have it on the forefront of your minds that there is demand, and I think that you are aware and trying to find solutions for kids to be able to skate, either in new parks or maybe park renovations. So thank you very much for that. Second point, I want to ask about the classification and compensation study, and I think this will be part of your manager comments later. So my questions will be, when is, maybe when is the last time the City of Tika K did one? Point out, I know the Municipal Association of South Carolina does recommend periodic classification and studies like this and other things. What do you, how do you expect the outcome to be? And what drives you to do it at this time? Have you had, and this may have been the answer, do you have significant turnover? Do you have complaints? Those are the types of things that I'm interested in.
And I think I can cover all those in my report for you. But I will tell you, the last time we did one was 2013. So, but I, the rest of that I'll have in my report.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, now we got two more tennis people. We got a lot of emails today about tennis. So I got to read all those mostly right after work. So let's start with Bill O'Boyle. Please come up and give your name and address, and you have three whole minutes. Appreciate all your emails, too, Bill. They're always so polite and mature. Being facetious. Yeah.
O'Neil?
David Lee.
O'Boyle.
And I apologize. I'm not Bill, but I'm on the board with Bill, and I missed the sign up. So we're just...
You guys can share your three minutes the best way you want.
Bill O'Boyle, 12087 Spinnaker Drive. I'm here tonight as a tennis player, as a tennis member, and as a resident of the of the City of Tika K. We're about to get our tennis courts closed in prime time, and we're very upset about it. And the other thing I wanted to address was the garbage trash that's been relocated outside of our courts four and five, excuse me, three and four. I call it the 100-foot rule. When you looked at the old one, it was halfway between the ninth green and the tennis courts. If you moved it to the right, it was the tennis. If you moved it 100 feet to the left, it would be on the ninth green. If that left had happened, 100 feet to the left, I wonder what the golfers would say about having a trash garbage place right beside the ninth green. It's very, the smell, the noise, the chance of rodents, because there's going to be food there, they're going to be, so there's going to be like Hotel California, they're going to check in and not check out. So it's very upsetting to us, and we would like somebody to, we asked before last year for help in this matter, and we'd like to ask again to see if it can be relocated. As far as the water tower painting, if the contractors were to come to, to come to the council or come to us and say, hey, you know, this painting of the water tower is going to affect the parking lot with all the cars getting paint on them, we're going to have to close down the golf. Would the golf be closed down right now in April, May, and June, prime time? Is that when we would pick to do this? I presume that this is the highest revenue-earning time for the golf, yet the tennis, the tennis has been shut down. This is prime time. The weather's perfect out there. We can walk out there right now. It's just gorgeous, and it's going to be gorgeous. It's not going to be gorgeous in August and in 95-degree weather. So last year, we were shut down at the same time because of COVID. And it just seems to be, it was very unclear what happened with the communication between everybody. I'm on the board, the tennis, and we voted, and the vote was that for two weeks, we would shut down, and in that two weeks, the court would be resurfaced. And we said, okay, we would do that. The minute, the minute the, the minute the vote was passed, then comes out a letter that says it'll be, it could be eight weeks. Nobody voted on that on the tennis board. That wasn't what was presented to us. So it was a serious miscommunication there. Two weeks in prime time versus eight weeks?
Thank you.
One minute.
We'll give you one minute.
Thank you. Kelly Ivanenko, 3113 Quiet Cove. I'm here also as a resident, as well as a PTR pro and a member of the board. And just to add on to what Bill said, you know, I think we've made a lot of headway just in the last day with some clarification and context around the process. And bottom line, I think our primary message is, we just really want to work collaboratively to make sure that we're making good decisions on behalf of not only the tennis community, but the whole community. Tennis is such an important aspect of the recreational amenities that Tika K has to offer. We just really want to put our best foot forward and make sure that the facility, the clubhouse, the courts, the grounds, all are representational of Tika K as a wonderful resort community. So thank you for working with us, and thank you for your partnership.
Thank you. Melissa? Melissa, you have three minutes. Please state your name, your last name, and your address, please.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Melissa Van Danish. I live at 562 Pine Links Drive in the beautiful city of Tika K, South Carolina. I echo her comments. We definitely want to work collaboratively and together and clearly through the email string, which I kind of started because I had everybody copied, but I wanted to make sure that we all understood the same information. And so Charlie, thank you very much for all the clarification. If I understand correctly, the water tower outer painting will happen two, three, maybe two, three weeks.
Gosh, not that long.
Okay, so...
It'll take about a week to a week and a half.
Okay.
Okay, to strip the paint off, and then a week to a week and a half to paint it, assuming good weather.
Understood.
You know, not high winds, rain, yeah, things like that. When people are 150 feet up in the air, winds are not where, not their friend.
Understood. And then the internal painting, inside painting can be done while we're on the courts. So the courts will open back up. And then separate and distinct, one and two will be resurfaced. So three and four will be open, which is
Correct.
Wonderful. Which was very different than the first communication that clearly was a miscommunication on what was going to happen the seven to eight weeks.
So did you get, did you get an email from Charlie?
I did, yes.
That was a miscommunication?
No, no. He was the clarification.
Got you.
So it was, it was, it was really very helpful. And so the other thing I just wanted to say was, the tennis community has become very strong in Tika K. I've been here seven years, and I heard it had been strong before I became a member. And then over the last several years, the community leaders in tennis, like Bill, like Vic, have done a wonderful job in creating a community for us all to enjoy. We want to keep doing that. And I think what people are afraid of is if we're shut down in prime time last year for COVID, and then we're shut down now, we're going to lose that momentum that they've worked so hard to get. So we just want you to know, we're here. We want to play tennis. We love our tennis courts. They do a lot to organize for us, and we really enjoy it.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks.
So just to be clear, this isn't about anything but the water tower, really. The water tower is what we, is where we get our water from, obviously. We had to wait till the water tower up on Hubert Grand Parkway was finished, so we can fill it up with water and get it all tested and made sure the water was clean. And we had to take this one offline. And so we had to take that, had to drain it all and make sure, this was all, this wasn't planned like overnight. This takes a long time to plan. We just can't call the water people and say, okay, we're ready Tuesday. Come on over Tuesday. This has been going on for months, months. We had to wait for that water. And everybody, remember how long that water tower took to get painted? We're not going to have to wait anywhere near that long to get painted, because we planned all this stuff out, down to the tee, just everything. And at the same time, simultaneously, somebody suggested, go ahead and resurface the courts at the same time. Now unfortunately, you can't resurface the courts while they're doing the outer part of the water tower. And at first, up until about three weeks ago, they said they were going to sandblast the outside, which meant half of this parking lot was going to have to be closed, and everything on that side was going to be closed. But no, we wouldn't have to shut the golf course down, because they could park wherever you want to park on that side of the golf course. First come, first served. If you show up and there's not a parking place, then either you don't play golf, or you have, get an Uber or something else. But just because this is going, it's not the same as a tennis court. So it's, we don't have, we're not favoring one tennis court over golf or anything. We're all neighbors. We don't, we didn't get elected and come up here and just lose our freaking mind over tennis. So I don't know why everybody thinks we're out to get tennis. This has been, we've been planning this for, Charlie, would I be remiss in saying eight months? Easily. So, we've, okay, well, we deal with your board.
I...
If you all want to, each want to, want to email from us, that's just not feasible. We'll, we'll work with your board. So you, whatever your board wants to do, that's what we do. That's who, that's who you elected to represent you, and that's who we worked for. I'm sorry, each and every one of you didn't get an email from us, but that's really not possible.
Understood. I think the conversion of the courts from tennis to pickleball makes us a little worried. So we just want to make sure we have our courts available as well.
Well, there's now, there's six pickleball, and there's six tennis courts. I can't believe anything. I don't know what else is more fair than that. We would love to put in more tennis courts. We would love to put in more pickleball. We would love this listed, we would love to do a skate park. The people who want trails are asking us all the time for more trails. The basketball court people want more basketball courts. The softball, the soccer, the, everybody wants more. We would love to give you more. We really would. We have a 15 or so million dollar budget. To compare us to Rock Hill, they have a $360 million budget. They dwarf us. And if I had a $360 million budget, I would put gold-plated poles on the tennis court. We just don't have the money. The first thing we have to do is public safety. Our fire department and our, and our police department, that's what we're here, that's why we have a city. So we will remain safe. And then after that, we have to pay our employees. Whatever's left over, we spend on recreation or whatever's left over. Whatever your elected officials, whatever you ask them to spend it on. But I mean, we've got, first, no ma'am, just sit down. We're done talking. Sit down. With this public comment, you had your minute, please. We got to move on.
All due respect, sir, we very much appreciate the fact that there are many needs and wants that the City Council has to manage, and we appreciate that. And that was in my email along with the letter we submitted. The bottom line is, we wanted to be part of that communication and coordination on the details when it was in the early stages. We were given none of that information until this spring. So
We gave your board...
Just prior proper planning was, is all we're asking for.
We gave your board plenty of notice. They picked the date. We could have done this July 4th or whatever date. You came back and said, April 23rd, whatever the date is, day after tomorrow, Thursday.
Because we were under the impression that we could do both projects in parallel. So there was just a misunderstanding on the full scope of the project.
You showed me the email. It says two weeks. I've, I've read the same emails you guys read.
I think, I think to Kelly's point...
What was the saying, eight weeks? Why wasn't Charlie saying eight weeks?
It's not eight weeks.
When he came in with that afterwards.
We're losing control here. We heard you. You got your minute. Really, I respectfully heard you. We're doing it, we're starting Thursday. The contracts have already been let. We've signed contracts. We gave you the opportunity to tell us when you wanted it done. And when you came back, we started all the contracts, and that's when, you can't just tell people, they have to go out and buy all the materials, they have to go out and buy all the paint. But I mean, this is, this is a first-world problem, isn't it? It's a first, we got people that, six people just got murdered in Rock Hill. We got people wondering where they're going to eat or sleep, and you guys are worried about your tennis time. So it's realistic. I just got it.
We do pay for it.
I agree. But we have to have water here to live here. We have to have water.
Okay. I think we need to...
Let's move on.
I think we all need to move on. I think there's a lot of communication that needs to happen going forward so that we can make sure that needs are addressed and that we're assessing everything appropriately and that we're working with you all. Okay? Yeah.
Good. We're going to discuss that. All right, let's go to item three, approval of minutes. Counsel, you've had a chance to read the minutes. Is there any additions, subtractions, or deletions?
No.
Seeing none, hearing none, the minutes stand as written. Let's go to item number four, committee reports. Item four, A, Economic Development Commission.
The EDC did not meet, so there's nothing to report.
Wonderful. Let's move on to B, the Planning Commission. We have Chris Leonard. You're going to do Planning Commission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A quick report from the Planning Commission. We did meet at our regular meeting on April 5th. Several things got done there. We have two new commissioners, Jess O'Connor and Michelle Nance. They've joined the commission effective the 1st of April. We recognize some outgoing commissioners. We did reelect new, or we elected officers, and Chris Leonard and Vice Chairman Matt Duitt were both reelected. We've reestablished, or reassigned some of our liaison stuff that we do with Fort Mill School District. Our agenda items for the meeting, we're continuing to talk about stormwater and what we can do to strengthen our development ordinances along that. We had a discussion with the city engineers about that. We've got some recommendations brewing. We're going to update those based on that, and then prioritize them based on what the, most likely will have positive impact, as well as feasibility. And so we should have that probably completed early second quarter here this, this year. We also looked at our bike and ped projects prioritization. So we've got a good scoring metric now. We're going to go through and score. We've got 52 projects that we've identified through various sources, the comp plan and things like that. We're going to score those based on desirability by the community, and then city staff and council and Planning Commission will have to go through some feasibility stuff. There's, there's, there's cost implications. And our next regular meeting is Monday, May 3rd at 6:30 here in the Glendon Center.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, let's move on to item 4C, Tika K Forever Foundation.
So we had a quick, brief meeting. We have the intro of new members. We have three new members, and two of them are returning. We just, Joey gave a brief detail of history to where we are now, that we've done the bond ordinance, the first read. Tonight, we'll do the second read, hopefully, and then we will move forward and break ground. The first week of June is what we're anticipating. We discussed the events that we'd like to hold over the next year or so as it relates to fundraising. Our first one being a bricks campaign, similar to how it is in the Memorial Gardens, where you can have your brick engraved and put into the park. We'll have Taste of York County will be Friday, October 1st. So we're moving forward with that and planning that. That was a great event a couple years ago. Unfortunately, COVID put the kibosh on that last year, but we're bringing it back. And then obviously, the ribbon cutting, once we're, once we're all squared away, about a year or so out. So those are the three main events that we're discussing and how we're going to move to fundraise for those. So, and that's it.
Any questions for Heather? Hearing none, let's move on to item 5A, which is the second reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance 556 as it relates to fiscal year 2021 Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule. As a reminder, staff is recommending the elimination of the user fee at the river access due primarily to the cost of getting electricity to the site for the additional staff necessary to charge the fee. Counsel approved first reading of this ordinance on March 15th meeting. Does everybody remember that meeting? Of course. So we're just eliminating the fee to use, or consideration of the fee. We were talking about making a fee, and now we're not going to have a fee down there. All right, any questions? Okay, let's hear a recommendation for a, for a motion.
All right, I'll go, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance 556 as it relates to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Are there any other final questions before we vote? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you. Going to item 5B. I'll get my 5B up here. This is the bond ordinance. Okay, this is the second reading of an ordinance authorizing the executive, the execution and delivery of the documents relating to the provision of municipal facilities consenting to and approving the issuance of a Tika K Public Facilities Installment Purchase Revenue Bond Series 2021 by Tika K Public Facilities Corporation to provide funding to finance and refinance the cost of acquiring construction equipment and installing municipal facilities. That's Catawba Park and the Police Station Bond. What we're doing is, we're refinancing the bond already. We got a lower rate. We're going to save a bunch of money. We're saving approximately $350,000. So let me go ahead and... So let me go ahead and read the executive summary. Council approved the introduction of the first reading at our special meeting on April 12th. This would be the second and final reading of an ordinance for the funding of phases one and two of Catawba Park. We will be breaking ground on Catawba Park in June of this year and with hopes of opening it to the public by fall of 2022. Amazing. As a reminder, this bond ordinance allows us to also refinance the 2018 bond for the Police Station and reduce that interest rate from 3.6 to 2.55, saving the city approximately $350,000 over the remaining life of the bond. Good job, Charlie.
Yeah, great job, staff, on that one.
All right, let's make a motion of this one, this is a great one.
Motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents relating to the provision of municipal facilities consenting to and approving the issuance of a Tika K Public Facilities installment purchase revenue bond series 2021 by Tika K Public Facilities Corporation to provide funding and finance and refinance the cost of acquiring, constructing, equipping, and installing municipal facilities, Catawba Park and the Police Station Bond.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any final questions before we proceed? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. Move on to item five C. Five C, let's see here. Five C is an introduction and first reading, is this the first reading?
Yes, sir.
Of an ordinance to amend chapter two, article five, divisions two and three of the city's code of ordinance purchasing budget and fiscal control policy. Council directed staff to revise and update the city's purchasing ordinance to bring it current. Council member Dash has met with the city manager and finance director on, in more than a few occasions over the past several months on the document council will be considering tonight.
Mr. Mayor, before you do any motion or anything, Bob McLeve has had the opportunity to do legal review and has a couple of minor edits for council to consider. If count, after he talks y'all through this and any other discussion y'all may have, if there are changes, just, you could say that in the motion. If the only changes are the attorney's, just, yeah, motion to approve with the attorney's changes will be fine enough and we'll capture those prior to second read.
Got that motion to approve with attorney changes? All right, thank you. Any final questions?
I.
Oh, go Bob, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Alicia, can you hear me?
I want to make sure. I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure since you've been very involved in this, just a, a few general comments about it and then a couple of specific comments. So, so what, what you have in front of you, the framework has come about over probably at least 50 years from three different sources. One's the South Carolina State Budget Control Board and then mass kind of massaged it over a few decades. And then also some of the state's own procurement ordinance is, is in it. So a framework has evolved over decades and now most major municipalities have adopted something very similar to what you see in front of you tonight. Now, my understanding is Alicia has put a lot of time in, into looking at what that basic framework that we have is and trying to tailor it more for a municipality this, your size rather than Columbia or Charleston. And Charlie's had some input in it too. So it's a, it's a big step forward. Your, your prior purchasing ordinance goes back almost to the beginning of the city when your budget was a small fraction of what it is now. It's, it's, it's a lot more detailed, so it will give guidance, more guidance to your staff and it'll give more guidance to potential providers of materials and services to the city. But along with detail comes dotting the i's and crossing the t's. There's going to be quite a bit more work for your staff involved in this. And sometimes detail's good, sometimes it can cut against you. For instance, the building you're sitting in now and the one next to it when it was bitted out, an aggrieved bidder contested it, hired legal counsel. Fortunately, this building had not started being built and we worked it out, rebid it. Maybe we missed a detail, maybe we didn't. I don't know. But, but it, it just goes, you, the devil's going to be in the details now because you've got a lot more of them. Had a few specific comments and they're small seemingly, but it's a practical matter. I don't know if you have it, do y'all have it in front of you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. On number 13, page six of 30, there's some provisions regarding insurance and, and these are mandatory. And without getting too far in the weeds, one, one of the things that it's required, not discretionary, but required is for anybody that's providing services to do something called waiving subrogation. I won't get too far down it, but basically when an insurance company pays a claim, they subrogate to the right of the injured person to go recover that money. What you're asking any, any insurance company of, of someone providing service to do is waive that right of recovery. Some insurance companies will, just will not do it. Your insurance company will not waive it and usually you have what's called a mutual waiver of subrogation and you won't do it, they won't do it. So what you've done maybe is hamstring yourself by requiring insurance, I mean, companies to waive subrogation. Some, just, they'll just knock some bidders out. And then there's some other requirements in, in this, this paragraph about insurance that my, my suggestion would be to, to, instead of making all of this mandatory, do what you're doing now and make it discretionary. And, and this is something Charlie deals with on a regular basis and if it's a large matter, he calls me and we look at the policies, we get certificates of insurance. So one consideration might be instead of shall all the way through that paragraph, replacing it with may. That's my comments on that section. Any questions on that? I have one, one more section and that's.
Please go ahead now, reserve my comments for then.
All right. On page 15 of 30, section 2.216, bids, request proposal, request qualification. It, it requires the city to send out invitation to individual contractors or vendors on the city's bill, bidder's list. That's, that's a defined term. I talked to Charlie about this this morning. We don't really have a, a quote, city's bidder's list. And for instance, just stating that there's one list, maybe you've got a plumbing job, you don't, you send it out to everybody on a bidding list. So small change, I would, I would put instead of vendors on the city's bid, bidder list, but to vendors on the applicable city's builders list, if any. Anyway, those are my two specific comments back to the, I, I don't want you to impose details that you can't live up to because somebody will call you on it.
So what would be your recommendation on this motion?
I did make those two changes.
Just the two changes?
Yep.
So does that mean we had to de-table this and come back next week?
No, no.
We could just make those pending changes on it.
I, I think you.
So we make a motion with changes?
Yes, and you can.
Changes are stated by the city, city attorney.
Yeah, and you can direct Charlie and I to go back in here and make, and it's, it's just a, I think a total of maybe five or six words difference.
Very good.
Real quick, I'm, I'm obviously not a procurement guy by any means, but what's your opinion on the, because didn't we have one that like mirroring the Rock Hill that was eight pages long? And then, or vice versa, one was eight or 10 and one was 35.
The one that, the, our current procurement is probably seven, eight pages. The Rock Hill one that I presented to council in 2019 is about 19, 20 pages. Pretty much mirrors this. I think I shared and Alicia had looked at the City of Clintons, which is very similar to City of Rock Hills. A lot of the wording was almost identical. And then there was a few other things that she had pulled from other places that went in, went into what you see tonight.
And what you, you dealing with it on a daily basis, what's your opinion of what's being presented tonight with the recommended changes from the city attorney?
I, I appreciate Bob's looking into it. I, I agree with, with the, the things that he brought up. From a, from a city standpoint, I mean, obviously council approves first read, I'll be meeting with department heads prior to second read and really going through this with them, make sure they understand it. Can we do it? Yes. Does it mean things will slow down? Some, yes. Some, it, it won't change at all. But the, hey, I need this done, I need, I need you to get somebody on this right now kind of thing. That, that doesn't happen as easily or as quickly as it would have in the past. I'm not saying that's a bad thing by any means, but it definitely changes slightly how we, how, how we operate and how we've been operating since I've been here. But, you know, when I started here, I think our general fund budget may have been $2 million, maybe, you know, in, in 2001. So, I mean, we, we are a, a larger city now. I mean, according to, according to the state of South Carolina, there are more cities smaller than us, than bigger than us in this state at this point. So I think the changes need to be made for sure. It's just going to take some education on my part to department heads to make sure they understand that, you know, you, you've got to go get bids on this, you've got to get, you've got to put, push this out for formal bids, you've got to get quotes and, and what those various levels are. There's a chart in here, and I'm sorry, I don't, I forget the page, the, as far as the spending levels.
Page nine.
Those, up on page nine, those don't bother me because as we're putting those together, I was thinking through how we actually operate now. Yeah, so I mean, those big ticket items are already coming to city council in form of a resolution. They've been discussed at budget meetings, you know, things like that. Still have the, the abilities in the case of an emergency affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the city to just get things done. The roads collapsing, you know, big storm comes in, just getting things done. So no concerns there. Yeah, I mean, it's, a lot, a lot of time and effort went into this. I think it's, it's very, it's to a certain extent, it's very similar to, to what council had a chance to look at in 2019. And in other aspects, there, there's some new things in it, some tweaks to it that, that Ms. Ash brought forward through, through her efforts. So I'm good at this point. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
So is this a better ordinance than the one it's replacing?
It's more robust for sure. Absolutely. Better from a, from a fiscal control standpoint, yes. This, this is better than what you've got by far, better than what, what we currently have on the books. Yes, sir.
You good?
All right, thanks, Bob. Thanks.
All right, so we haven't done a, had made a motion, correct? Alicia, do you want to make a motion since it's your baby?
Sure, I'll make a motion. Mayor and members of council, motion to approve with attorney changes the introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending chapter two, article five, division two and three of the city's code of ordinances.
I have a motion, Alicia, who wants to second?
I'll second, second.
And Heather's seconds. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did she vote? Alicia, did you vote?
Yes, aye.
Of course she did. All right, thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you, Alicia. All right, let's move on to item six. Oh, this is back up again? Get my screen up here. We got screens up here in the front working, screens, okay. New business, item six A, consideration of court solicitor agreement. Motion, the city was notified by Willie Thompson of his decision to resign his position as Tika K's court solicitor effective May 1st, 2021. The city advertised the position and received interest from Jennifer Colton, who currently serves as senior solicitor of the 16th Circuit Solicitors Office. After receiving a positive recommendation from Mrs. Colton, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Thompson, a review of her resume with extensive experience and, and an interview, staff recommends council enter into an agreement with Jennifer Colton for the city's court solicitor. The agreement's initial term is through May 30th, 2024 with the option to renew. What did I say? May, how did I say, May out of September? This, the agreement's initial term is through September 30th, 2024 with the option to renew. All right, any questions? Any comments? All right, how about a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Jennifer Colton as the city's court solicitor and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
I have a motion, Mr. Machina, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ryan Richard. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Alicia. Item six B, introduction of first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter 18, section 18 dash 10 of the city's code of ordinances as it relates to filing a statement of candidacy filing fee. All right, let me pull that one up. Wanda W. Hempel Registration and Elections Director Contract contacted the city in regard to filing fee amount and whether or not the city has interest in changing the fee prior to the November elections. There was an interest by council to review this amount as it had remained the same for the past 14 years, even though the cost of the elections has increased. The current filing fee is $25 and proposed filing fee amount is $100 for mayor and council. For reference, area filing fee fees are Clover does 60 for mayor, 45 for council, Fort Mill does 100 for unopposed and 50 for opposed, York does 100 for mayor and 50 for council, and Rock Hill does $346.08.
That's random.
I wonder why it's, had to put that eight cents in. All right.
It's probably.
Go ahead, Alicia.
I was going to say they probably do it to reflect the actual cost.
Are there any comments or questions on this? So basically we're at 20, we're 25 now, it only affects people running for office.
That is correct.
Like you, Liz. So you're going to have to come up with an extra 75 bucks. Oh, Heather.
Is that anything? Yeah, what's your point on me for?
I'll do it. Motion to approve the introduction, first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter 18, section 18 dash 10 of the city's code of ordinances as it relates to filing a statement of candidacy filing fee.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Gus Machinas. All in favor, please, all in favor of this motion, please vote now, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous again. It's one of those unanimous nights. We're on six C. Okay, this is the 16th Judicial Circuit Traffic Enforcement Mutual Aid Agreement. This traffic enforcement mutual aid agreement is an annual agreement entered into by law enforcement agencies within the 16th Circuit, 16th Judicial Circuit. The agreement allows for a mutual aid between law enforcement agencies to the fullest extent permitted under South Carolina law. Pretty straightforward. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve 16th Judicial Circuit Traffic Enforcement Mutual Aid Agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
And do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous again. All right, that takes us to item seven, the city manager's report. Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First concert was this past Saturday and probably an understatement, but it was very well attended. It was great seeing the community back out, having a good time at events. Our next concert is May 15th. It is the Eagles Tribute Band that we had two years ago on the border. They have a big crowd following, so we are expecting another great crowd in May. So get there early. But really good seeing everybody out Saturday night, beautiful weather, great time. As the mayor did the proclamation earlier this evening for Earth Day and Spring Cleanup As the mayor did the proclamation earlier this evening for Earth Day and Spring Cleanup Week, we do have supplies for volunteers who would like to do a neighborhood work day or cleanup day somewhere in the city, whether it be at a, you know, some open space in their neighborhood or at a park close by. Just contact Tim Gillett at City Hall. I'd be glad to pass out those supplies. I believe he got those from the county and the Palmetto Pride Council. So glad to distribute those for folks that are looking to do some type of litter cleanup or, or things of that nature. Bids for construction, as I make counsel aware, bids for construction in Catawba Park at the request of several of the contractors. We moved that from April 15th to April 29th, so a week from this Thursday. We'll, we'll receive those bids until 2:00 PM. At 3:00 PM, we will open them here. They're due at 2:00 PM at City Hall. We'll open them at 3:00. If you bring it here at 3:00, it will not be opened for anybody that's listening. 2:00 City Hall, bring us the bids. So looking forward to getting those and see when we're at there. Beach and Swim Center, a lot of concerns there, counsel. We're going to continue to monitor, but currently we've got 219 membership packages sold as of this morning. Budget's based on 500. So need a lot more.
Okay.
Need a lot more folks signing up at the Beach, Beach and Swim Center. I do not anticipate any memberships from Wentzong Bay because driving down that street, it appears everybody has put a pool in their backyard. So a lot of pools going in around the city. Counsel, I would anticipate this being a big topic of conversation during our budget process this summer going towards next year as to how we handle that facility going forward. But staff is going to continue to advertise membership signups on our various lists, our social media pages and city website, trying to get that word out. We have advertised for proposals. This is the, the question Ms. Duda asked earlier in public comments. It's for a consultant to perform a compensating, compensation and classification study for us. The last one we did was in 2013, and it's necessary due to the various new positions that we, that have been created within the city over the last eight years, making sure that they are at the appropriate pay grades. Those pay grades then dictate the, the salary scales and ensure we are paying staff competitive, competitively with surrounding and similar jurisdictions and similar private sector jobs. This really should be done every five to seven years, so we're, we're trying to get that going now. Depending on where bids are, we'll either get that process started or we'll carry that over till October to the, to the, to the new fiscal year. Dora and I have worked together since 2013 and adjusted the salary scales by the cost of living over the years to keep it somewhat up to speed. So I don't know that we're way off there. There may be a few positions or maybe a department here or there that may, may get a recommendation for a slight adjustment, but we're hoping we can get this done in time for the, the budget conversations. But again, it may carry over till October. But looking forward to getting that out there, getting those job descriptions updated.
Are there a lot of companies that do this kind of work, that do this kind of stuff?
Oh, yes, sir.
Really?
Yes, sir. There's a, a major one in Rock Hill, the Archer Group, who has done ours in the past. It's funny, Dr. Archer passed away, what, maybe a year, Dora's gone? Maybe a year or two ago. He was a professor at Winthrop. I was taken aback when I, when I met him. They're little 90-year-old couple, but they're doing them nationwide. There are several companies in and around South Carolina, North Carolina area. A lot of the cities did some last, did theirs last year, a lot more doing this year based on what I'm seeing on the, on the lists.
What do those typically cost?
It really depends on how much work they've got to do with your, like, our job descriptions are pretty up to date. We do a good job with that. So if they're not having to do a whole lot of work there, you could be somewhere around $20,000. But depending on how behind you are and how much they have to do, I've seen them as high as 55,000 to 60,000. So we're hoping for that low end on those. So I think we'll probably be somewhere in that 20 to 30 range. Yes.
Better be a close to 20.
And last but, but not least on my report, congratulations again and best wishes to Barbie and Tom and Diana and Warren. They really, really meant a lot to us. Yeah, especially, yeah, Bob, Barbie and, and Tom and Diana being, being there at City Hall with us. Obviously, you know, Warren's been a part of, of the firefighting services for over 22 years here in the city. Yeah, we're definitely going to miss them, but definitely appreciate everything that they've done for us over the years. With that, I'll conclude my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go to council comments. Alicia, we'll let you go first since you're on the phone.
I'll just say congrats to, to those who have retired. Thank you so much for your service, and I'll just share, there's a sun bug going around, so everyone do your part in extra hand washing if you can. So thanks so much, guys.
I don't know if we explained it before this started. Alicia's got the bug, and we don't know what kind of bug it is, but just for safety's sake, we had her stay home, so she called in. I don't think she missed anything. You got, you got everything out of this just the same, right, Alicia? You can hear us, okay?
Yes, sir, thanks.
Great. Okay, thank you, Alicia. Hope you feel better soon. Ryan, that haircut?
All good.
Okay.
All set.
You going to give anybody, where you, tell them where you got that haircut, in case we want to?
Sports clips.
Sports clips. Y'all think about sports clips next time.
Way to shop local, appreciate your business.
Was that about a $40 cut?
With the head massage.
Wow, okay.
Next time y'all are going to have to give me a heads up that we're wearing our shirts because I didn't get the memo.
Well, I came right from work, so I didn't.
I just want to say congratulations to all the retirees and then all of our new committee members who were sworn in tonight. We thank you for volunteering to help move things forward. It takes, takes the village, so we're, we're grateful, but that's it. I don't have anything.
Gus?
I too have to thank and congratulate all the retirees. You know, I've talked to my financial advisor, and with three more kids to put through college, I am due to retire four days after I die. So I'm jealous of all four of you, so thank you for everything you did for the city. Saturday night, it was really nice to see people getting outside and having a great time. Concert was amazing, there was just a ton of people there. I really look forward to the next one in May, hope to see everybody out there, and that's it.
All right, thank you, Gus.